Good evening. I think we're all here. I'd like to start the May 26th meeting of the Oxford Board of Selectmen. Now, read this into the record. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, ordering suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 38, Section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020, order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people they may gather in one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford are being conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access proceedings as provided for in this order. And as we have been doing, if we could only have a moment of silence and prayer to remember all those people that have been working diligently, frontline workers, police, fire EMT, the hospitals, doctors, patients. I'd like to also, you know, remember those that have had their some deceased members that have passed and those that have been affected, keep them in your thoughts. And I'd like to also just have us remember and say a prayer for all those fallen heroes that have braced our great country and provided us with such liberties as we had yesterday. We're not able to actually have our festivities. So if you could just remember them for a few moments, please. Thank you. Now, the first item on our agenda is an Oxford update on the COVID response, and we'll let the town manager pick that up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Once again, a week goes by and many, many things happen while we're trying to face this pandemic. As of May 26th, that is today, the Department of Public Health has notified us and through the great work through our public health nurses that we've brought on board, one of which will get an opportunity to address you and hopefully you ask her any questions. Total of 66 residents from Oxford who have confirmed positive for COVID-19. Please bear in mind, as of last Friday, we were at 60 and as of today, we're at 66. So our numbers have not necessarily leveled off or going down. They continue to incrementally go up. And also, we continue to hold at eight deaths on which we've been notified that have incurred residents who passed away from complications related to COVID-19. Once again, we're continuing through the manager's office and through our social media presence, making sure that the public is aware of every new order that the state has issued, as well as any updates that we've had from our Board of Health and to whether it's to the business community or to residents alike. We continue to generate an awful lot of comments through our COVID-19 email system, and I must say that our Board of Health agent and our enforcement division has been quite busy as we're trying to roll out little by little away from a strict stay-at-home type of order. But on May 18th, the governor did release, since we've met last, the order implementing a phased reopening from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And he did impose workplace safety standards to address the COVID-19. This is supposed to be a four-phased opening with the eventual getting back to normal as much as possible. But the first phase has already begun, and we'll talk a little bit about that later on. But again, this continues to maintain that we are supposed to uphold social distancing and also limiting the number of maximum people enclosed approximately remains at 10. Knowing that we have a lot of things that we're going to go through that relate to this phased reopening, I thought it was important for the board to have an opportunity to at least meet one of our public health nurses, Amy Grenette, who is an advanced practice nurse and has a master's in nurse health education and has been a medical surgical nurse and 10 years in our school department. Mind you, both she and Kathleen Schumer, who is also a nurse practitioner and advanced practice nurse, who also works for our public schools, they were the ones who initially approached me on wanting to be able to help. And of course, we were already going down the pathway where we had seen problems with the state and also our over, I would say, overcapacity local public health contracted nurse that we had who was serving multiple towns. And so we came up with the idea and the board supported an intermunicipal agreement with the town of Dudley. And so it's with great pleasure that I introduce Amy Grenette, who can tell you a little bit about what it's been like to work as a public health nurse doing contact tracing here for both the town of Oxford and the town of Dudley. Dudley, welcome, Amy.
Thank you. Thanks for the introduction. Hello, everybody. So what we've been doing at first, it was just, you know, we wanted to to be a part of it. You know, we're not on the front lines anymore. However, there's so, so much important work to be done as far as tracing is go, goes. So we have been, you know, at first, we were like town manager said, we were taking care of Dudley and Oxford because there was that intermunicipal agreement. So since then, we, I onboarded a new Board of Health nurse who has since taken over Dudley, and we've kind of weaned off that and put all of our focus in Oxford. And I think it's really well received. The people enjoy talking to us. At first, we thought this is going to be difficult. Nobody's going to want to answer the phone if they don't know who it is. And they're not going to want to talk about their health, you know. So, and we found it quite opposite, honestly. So we are able to, rather than the state take control of that and say, you know, go down a checklist of, did you have abdominal pain? Did you have a headache? Did you, we can actually talk to these people as a member of our community. And, you know, people trust nurses. They, they just want to talk and give their, you know, I guess, seek advice, really. So we are able to get out of them, whoever you've been around since you've been diagnosed, we reach out to contacts, we explain the differences between, you know, you need to be in quarantine, you need to be in isolation, what does that look like? We check in with these people every single day, sometimes every other day, because while most people do enjoy talking to us, there are some that, you know, they don't, they don't want to hear from me every day. So, and that's fine. So, you know, it's just a way of making sure, and they have a lot of questions. I've been, I've come into my office and have, you know, 11 messages from people just wanting to call and talk because they don't understand, you know, or they'll call and say, you know what? I forgot that I was around someone else and, you know, for a half hour and maybe you can contact them. And so it's important that we are just in the stopping of the spread locally. We're talking to businesses that perhaps had a positive case. We're working with Tom Purcell, our Board of Health agent, you know, Housing Authority, all, everybody who's involved, the school system. They know that they can call us. And right now, I say Kathy and I, we basically eat, sleep, breathe, and drink COVID. It's, you know, updates every day. So we're, we're happy to be a part of it. We do think it's helping. We think, you know, it's well received and, you know, we're able to get people what they need. If they can't leave the house and it's an elderly woman, say, and she's a widow, how are you getting food? How are you going to pick up your prescriptions? And sometimes they're stumped. I don't know. I don't have that. Well, we can help you. So being a part of the community is important to help them. So that's also well received. So it's, it's been, it's been good. You know, of course, it has its challenges, but things change every day. And like I said, Tuesdays and Fridays, we have, you know, a 90-minute update, and that update changes from Tuesday to Friday and then the following Tuesday. It's just always changing and, you know, we're always keeping updated. So, you know, if, if anyone has any questions regarding anything else, you know, I'm sure there's a lot of questions on, you know, what does a tracer do? Or, you know, what's the difference between local Board of Health, you know, the agent compared to what the tracer does? You know, if there's any questions or anything like that.
Amy, I'd just like to thank you very much. I'm sure it's quite an undertaking, what, what you are doing. Whatever you are doing, I know it's helpful, and I personally thank you very much for your hard work. And wish you well and your family well and your endeavor of what you're doing. So, and I don't know if there's any other board members that want to say anything or have any questions? I don't see any. Oh, yeah, Mike Daniels.
I just have one quick question for you. You had mentioned that during your tracing phone calls and stuff, if you're talking to some people, you're offering up resources to get food and medications and stuff like that. Are you finding that you have enough resources from the town to be able to offer those services? And/or are you able to reach out to the town in any way, shape, form, and get those resources that you need? Is there anything we can help you with more?
Well, you know, our town manager, Jen, she's been, and I think that's part of the reason why she brought local people on, you know, if I offer to do something for somebody, I can do it. I live five minutes from them or, you know. So we haven't found that we're, we're, you know, stumped for anything. I had a family in Dudley that they were, you know, all positive, and they didn't have any masks, and they didn't have any gloves. And so we just worked through with Dudley and, you know, our, our fire chief, you know, we had some extra masks, you know. And it's not likely we had to supply these people with, you know, 50 masks. It's, they were just looking for something five, you know, just some gloves. There was a handicapped person in the household. So they were worried, you know, and it's just the idea of putting their, their, that's one less thing they have to deal with, right? So if you need milk or you need bread or you need your prescription picked up. And yeah, we, we have, so far, we've had the resources. I mean, this community is really great in terms of, you know, most of them say, oh yeah, my neighbor is so kind, she's shopping for me, or they have family around. So, you know, at first, there's this huge stigma. Everybody was so afraid to, you know, somebody would find out they have COVID or, and then it's really, everybody's really so helpful to each other and empathetic. So it's, we've been able to really see a, a good side of it.
Awesome. Thank you very much, and thank you for all that you're doing.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you again, Amy.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Amy. And please extend to Kathleen. Thank you for her update this afternoon after, after doing all our phone calling. We greatly appreciate it. I hope you have a good evening. Give our best to the sergeant. Talk to you soon. Thank you. The next item has to do with the Board of Health as well, and that is, in your package, you'll see a written letter that's outlining the mandatory requirements for reopening and, and being able to distribute it to our Oxford business establishments. I mean, just like Amy just highlighted, when you start talking about carrying a caseload where you're constantly having to check in with people over a 14-day period or longer, depending on how long they have an illness, you start to realize the amount of hours that it requires for extensive outreach. Now, we're having to shift gears as our Board of Health is looking at trying to help businesses figure out how they can meet the requirements that have been put forth by the state, the Department of Public Health, and the Department of Labor standards. And they're not easy to, to sort of navigate if you're a business. It's not so like it's just, you just open up your hair salon. There's compliance checklist, there's attestation forms and posters. You have to train anybody who's working within your establishment. You have to meet the same kind of very restrictive guidelines for proximity and spacing within your establishment. And once again, the disinfecting types of protocols and signage. So for having one sole Board of Health agent and a very small Board of Health and having a whole number of businesses, you can imagine what that's like. But true to the, what I consider to be the exceptional work in collaboration that we're having with our Board of Health and our Town Manager's Office and our Board of Health agent, you'll see in your packets, an actual letter that has been designed and is being handed out to businesses one-on-one, as well as a number of what we call templates that have been sort of put together to help those businesses that go and, and actually take a business step by step, whether it's, you know, dealing with what is still required in terms of social distancing, but the hygiene protocols, the staffing operations, the cleaning and disinfecting, all of those things. So like any one of these new orders that have been issued by the state, it comes with this share of many questions from both the public and also from business owners. And that's what we field on a regular daily basis here, not only through our COVID-19 email, but also through phone calls. And whether it's people questioning whether someone's still being compliant or whether someone's meeting the full merits of what a phased reentry is with, with the latest governor's orders. So along with the things that have been put together by our Board of Health, also the academic Public Health Volunteer Corps has also put together some training materials that we're also handing out to our local businesses that also, once again, reinforce some of the aspects that have been put forth by the state. Once again, we don't always have a lot of time to try to pull this together, and sometimes people jump the gun and expect it to all be put in our hands. You know, this last order, the governor announced it on a Sunday night before actually dialoguing with any of the local Boards of Health. And by Monday, we had a whole number of people that on the 18th were formally concerned about how we were going to implement a lot of these and how we were going to enforce it. So we're moving forward with that. We're collaborating with, you know, the Massachusetts Association of Health Boards, who've also come online. If you look in your package, you'll see information about the role of a Board of Health with regards to town meeting. I am going to talk a little bit about that tonight. In particular, the, I've spoken with our legal counsel. As you know, we talked about postponing our town meeting to June 24th, but not setting the warrant until we get further information from the state. So today, on the Lieutenant Governor's phone call, along with having spoken to three legislators in the House recently, the Senate had already approved reduced quorum levels and also stipulations to allow town meetings to go forward with perhaps a clear focus only on financial articles. And it's sitting in the House of Representatives right now. And today, they said, you know, pump the brakes, don't set the warrant yet. Our legal counsel, Mark Rich, also said that we still have time. We would be actually posting the final warrant. We have up until seven days before the actual town meeting. I would still like to have and recommend that we have our town meeting on the 24th. It's just that if, if we wind up having to embrace new orders that come down from the state, if we have our full warrant that was originally drafted but not signed off by this board that has planning board articles in it and other things that would actually not be allowed or permissible at this town meeting, it could get very confusing, even to an already confusing situation, which might be, you know, a situation which we have to really mitigate the possible transference and spread of COVID even several weeks from now. So what we want to do is make sure it's, it's very clear. People will know what they're going to be voting on. And we've gotten confirmation from a number of sources that they anticipate taking this up this week and at the latest by early next week, which will still give us a full, almost a month to be able to, you know, post the warrant and have people be able to see it long before a seven-day guideline. But if we put the whole warrant together and we find out that really all we can do is the budgetary articles, it's, it's, it's something where I think people are going to have a lot more questions than they answered. And remember, the Board of Selectmen are the ones who can actually take off even through, you know, submitted warrant articles are the ones who finalize the warrant. So that will be your job. I'm hoping to have it at our next meeting so that you'll see that it will hopefully be just the financial articles. And hopefully, we'll get guidance from the state on what a reduced quorum can look like. So I did get, you know, more information on that, both through our legal counsel and through some of the state boards in some of our legislative entities today. The next item relates to the fact that many of you are already aware that the town was informed last week. There were a number of complaints locally by residents that there was an opening of a particular business that was not part of the phased opening of the governor's plans for businesses to begin to open. That business namely was Prime Fitness in North Oxford that had opened despite the governor's phased reopening order. Many of you already know that the town had taken the violation seriously, and our Board of Health agent had visited the business a number of times. And last week, had not only issued verbal warnings, but had also issued written warnings and citations that were consistent with the governor's recommendations on how to do enforcement with the state enforcement guidelines. At the end of the week, towards the end, a cease and desist order was given to the owner on May 21st, 2020. And we're continuing as a community to follow the guidance, both through the state and through our legal representatives. I also wanted to update the board, knowing that there will be more questions that come about saying, what is the ability of both municipal offices as well as regular offices to begin phased opening? I've spoken with a number of my colleagues, many who are choosing to continue. Some of them actually have not been open like we have open to our staff with a one-person, one-office occupancy, which for many of these offices winds up being about 25%, which is what the state is recommending. So some communities didn't even have that. They were just operating strictly from remote, with the exception of police and fire. Looking at what is going to actually require of us municipal-wise to begin our type of reopening, we're going to take into a lot of, you know, I think, factors that have to deal with that is no different than what businesses have to deal with, which is we have to provide that kind of training. We're going to have to make sure we can enforce the rules that will be no different than what businesses are having to adhere to. There's an awful lot of new protocols that have to be in place. Equipment, we have to assure the way that we interact with different types of equipment and staff themselves. So those things have to be considered, and we are having a staff meeting this week to think about the departments that can slowly do this. But we also have to take into consideration as well budgetarily, how we're going to actually move forward with what we expect to be reduced demand for services. And we've seen that already happen as a municipal side, that many people are not opting to come to a building to do business, but are trying to do it online or through telephone and through appointments. So we may try to do that as we watch to see if our trends continue going in the right direction. But I'll have a better update about which areas of our government will start to continue to move into a more, what I consider to be interactive phase with the public. We already have the DPW, which is back, but has been working with more strict requirements and has had a staggering of its workforce, but being able to meet the needs that it has. Obviously, working in confined spaces is a different story, and working where you may not have the same demand for your services is another consideration. I did have another conversation this week budgetarily, actually, it was last Friday, with our superintendent, who, like myself, is working on reducing our overall requests that we put in for our original balanced budget, understanding that we don't expect state revenues to come in the way that they have traditionally come in with certainty. I have been online with our local delegation, and it looks like the state is probably going to put off making a decision about a budget, could be as late as the very beginning of July. And that is because they posted a delay in their collections till July 15th for people to file their tax returns. And so they want to get as much of June in so before they make a decision about what they're going to put together for a revenue consensus figure. But they believe that they will still try to be on target with passing their budget and having the governor, you know, be able to sign it in the month of July, which is traditionally what that does happen. It's just that usually they take a much longer month-to-month in advance. So hopefully, we'll have better understanding of what the collections will be for the state as well. But that's the best news that I can give you about the budget piece of it from the state's perspective on collections. The one bit of good news we had this, since the last time we saw you, is that the Department of Veterans Services, through the Secretary of Veterans Services, had issued the reimbursements through the Chapter 115, which deals with our current caseload that we have for beneficiaries, where we are dependent on reimbursement from the state. And that usually comes in installments through the course of the year, and they gave us ahead of schedule our reimbursements so that we wouldn't be caught off base with that. And I thought that was a good thing for us to have happen. The other thing that we found out is that the Federal Cares Act, which is also known as the Federal Corona Relief Fund Act, which you heard a lot about more than a month and a half ago. It really hasn't trickled down to the towns yet. What has happened is that there's been over $500 million that was sort of put in abeyance that was intended to go to local municipalities through some kind of formula. Well, they've informed us that the town of Oxford could eventually be eligible for $1.2 million. Now, this would be for types of reimbursement costs related to COVID, all the way, not just for what we just went through potentially, but all the way to December of 2020, because they know we're going to continue to incur costs even once we, we start to get ourselves back together in offering our public services differently than we've been doing over the last month and a half to two months. So this is money that may not come through FEMA, which traditionally only reimburses you up to 75% for very specific costs. This Cares Act would make this community eligible for that other 25%, and then for a lot of other things that don't ever get covered by FEMA or MEMA. So the problem here is that there's a lot of detailed information. You have to supply them. And the type of auditing that the federal government does is quite intense. And you don't want overlapping of what you've applied for MEMA and FEMA to also perhaps get being applied for in the Cares Act and then DPH funding that might come through grants. So I had, like many of my other counterparts, started to realize that, you know, we don't have a lot of ability to act in very quick ways to make sure we have all of our information available. And so this June 5th is the deadline to apply for the Cares Act. All of a sudden, we were just handed that down as of last Wednesday. So I've actually been looking at hiring a consulting firm to work with us that actually can get reimbursed through the Cares Act money. So that would be helpful to us to stay on target, to submit. And so working with them this week to submit an application and working with our emergency management director as well as our finance director to see what areas they'll be able to help us go after. And again, I have to emphasize this. This is not about just what's occurred. It's about what's going to continue to occur for the next six months to a year in terms of costs. So the firm that I'm looking at is Strategic Municipal Solutions. They were sought after by a lot of area towns, and I got the call late on Friday because they, they can't possibly do every town. And we've, we're fortunate enough to be selected as one of the towns that they're willing to work with. And so that, that begins in earnest tomorrow. The other thing I wanted to let you know is, aside from the Worcester Regional Chamber of Commerce working for mitigating the economic damages, we've also been working closely with our Webster Dudley Oxford Chamber to make sure that a lot of the local businesses understand that the federal government is still offering, you know, particularly through the banks, for businesses that are trying to now get back up on their feet. And so it's not just about the Paycheck Protection Act. There's a lot of other resources that are going to go through that. And, you know, as a Board of Select, you may not think about those pieces of how to actually help those local businesses, but they do contact us looking for those resources. And so I think it's important to use this opportunity to tell them that we have continued to post those, and any questions they have, they can ask us or either Chamber of Commerce. And finally, tonight's donation shout-out goes to Charlton Sewing Center that actually had contacted us about creating a cloth face mask, knowing that there was going to be a huge uptick in the request for that. And as you can see in your packet, in the request for that. And as you can see in your packet, Lorraine and the Board of Health and Tom Purcell sent a really nice letter of thank you to them. And they wanted to make sure that people had the opportunity to have these masks and they went forward and and actually produced a whole bunch of them to be able to use for both our seniors and anybody else who needed one that didn't have the ability to secure one on their own. And that would be it for the COVID-19 update to the board.
Very good. Thank you, Jen, so much for that information. And again, thank you to Amy again for her help. Next item on our agenda is the Cobunkel property acquisition. Again, I'll refer to the manager.
Sure. I think in your packet you'll see actually all the way up until this evening at 5:30, our legal counsel has been working to try to get the closure of the Cobunkel Beach property or Jason Park property from Ms. Lois Harrison. And that was per the order of town meeting last year. There was concerns that we weren't going to be able to close. The closing date is maintained for the 29th. And we have above put in the acceptance of the deed for the Board of Selectmen. And we would be looking for the board's support as we go forward to be able to actually accept the deed as it was presented for the land to be transferred to the care and custody of the town of Oxford.
All right. Thank you, Jen. Board members, any questions, comments, concerns for? Okay, I don't see any. Then I would entertain a motion that we accept the deed from Lois Harrison for the land on Cobunkel Drive, which is pursuant to the vote of the October 2nd, 2019 Special Town Meeting under Article 10 in the form that was presented and to execute the deed and the acceptance accordingly.
I make that motion.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Then I will call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. We will accept that deed, Jen.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is our Town Managers Report. So you're up again.
Yes, and it's not a long one, so that's a good thing. The first order of business is the approval of minutes for the meeting of May 12th in which all members were present.
I maintain a motion to approve those numbers.
I make that motion.
Second that motion.
Move to second, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. Five in affirmative, they are approved.
Thank you. The next item has to do with a request for declaration of surplus from our MIS Finance. The board is in receipt of a request from our finance director Katie McKenna to declare the attached three lists of items as surplus. A lot of them are old phones and iPads that may still have value and, you know, look to sell them on the appropriate sites or to, you know, put them on a yield for being able to put them as a block item to dispose of them. And so we'd be looking for approval for the attached list to declare them as surplus.
And then obtain a motion to declare the attached list surplus.
Make that motion.
Second that motion.
Got a motion in the second. Any comments or questions? Then I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. Five in affirmative, they are surplus.
Terrific. I'll let them know. The next item has to do with a donation. Before you heard us talking about donation of masks, well, those were very much appreciated as is the following donation, which I'm going to ask the board to formally accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A. And that is a donation being given by the business formerly known by Walmart here in this community in the amount of $2,500 to be awarded for the purchase of department items that be needed and administered under the Fire Chief. And so it is a donation that will go strictly to our fire department donation account in the amount of $2,500.
Right. I then obtain a motion to accept the cash donation of $2,500 in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
I make that motion.
Second that motion.
We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
Abstain.
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's four in the affirmative, one abstention. We gladly accept those donations.
Thank you. The next item is a follow-up. I know that Selectman SAD had asked in particular the last meeting if this, the entire COVID pandemic was going to have any direct impact on existing projects, construction wise. And so we did send a request out and our DPW director, Sean Dievold, had sent. And in your packets, you'll see a partial project status listing as of May 21st, looking at which projects were ongoing construction and what stages they were at and also design projects for this year. One of the things that Director Dievold has acknowledged is that and he's mentioned it in one of the previous meetings, is that the biggest concern was about the permitting process at the state level, particularly for environmental permitting, which we have at least the Sacorappa Bridge, which requires that. And he's made that quite public to the board and to the community. That continues to push the deadlines in terms of actually getting and extending the validity of the state permits. And that is likely to cause delays for that particular project. But if you look at the actual partial listing, you'll see the projects that were complete from the Leicester Street Hot and Place Recycling for the roadways, the prep and patch. It is Park, the boiler replacements at the OCC and the middle school, the resurfacing for the track at the school. All of these projects, you can see many of them are complete and ones that are starting is in particular my next agenda item that I'll review about the library. But that is the construction projects and that totals ongoing $3.3 million. And the exception to what's ongoing and that has not been completed is the Harwood Street Signal. And you can see work that is being done, a lot of the infrastructure work in terms of the underground stuff is happening as we speak. And the overlay for Mount Pleasant Street and Leicester Street is ongoing and also we have a number of projects that are in the design phase. If you look a little bit further down and where they've either been completed in terms of our actual design, the bidding was only contingent on getting approval from the state for the permit reviews. But the sign is complete for Sacorappa. Leicester Street Bridge repairs, the design is still in the design phases. We're again waiting for Mass DOT approval. And then Rosinav and Corbin Road Drainage, the design is complete. But we're going to be bidding that in June. And of course, its funding is incorporated into our budget for capital projects that would be at the annual town meeting. There's a number of things, including the Main Street Concept Plan, which is still being designed and the completed projects have to do with the bidding for Cobunkel Beach paving, which has been completed. And that would mean that the project would be going forward. And along with some road drain pulver work and sewer pumping and the OCC feasibility. So the ones that you can see that have been completed, the bidding will start in June for a number of these projects. For the other ones, they've actually been completed. So we're doing pretty well, even with almost a half a million dollars in design work. A lot of it's been complete. So the DPW and our engineer has been quite busy. And, you know, if there's specific questions about specific projects, you know, we can certainly sort of relay those over to Sean or we can have direct conversations with him. But he did put together this table and just wanted to let you know that other than having town meeting for ones that are coming up for the final construction appropriation, the other ones are pretty much on target with the exception of anything that had required a DOT approval or Mass DEP approval. I hope that is helpful. Selectman SAD, do you have anything in particular? Do you think you need to relay to them? Okay.
No.
I'll just, you know, I appreciate that. The next item has to do with one of our construction projects. Oh, sorry. I don't know what's happening here. We're calling somebody and I didn't mean to do that. The next item has to do with the library envelope restoration project. We were, this was one of those things that we were concerned we were going to lose the funding for. This was a matching grant that the town already appropriated its match to. And we had been awarded over $55,000 to repair the envelope of the building along with some of the stained glass windows. Mass Historic Commission had been in touch with us. They were really concerned about all of their projects across the Commonwealth and were talking about actually taking the money away. And Sean and I and Facilities Director, we all got on the phone with Mr. Holtz out of the Mass Historic Commission. We had told them that with regards to the overall project, that if we could narrow the scope to the envelope and proceed with that construction aspect, that we felt very confident that we could rebid the project and get it going by June 1st, which they basically said that if we didn't have the project going by June, that then they're going to take the money away. So I'm really pleased because we just had the bid opening and we did have the lowest bid of about $137,000 for mail-in construction. And as a contractor goes, they are going to be doing the work. They did do work at the porticoes over at the schools as well for masonry. So I think we have, you know, at least a firm that we're comfortable in dealing with. And now our money won't be taken away. We have another construction project that's going along and will continue. So we're very happy about that. I also put in our schedule here to remind the board that Lori Kelly from the Clerk's Office has revised the political calendar, recognizing and we've uploaded that to Facebook page and our town website to indicate to voters that the deadline to register to vote before the annual town election, which was moved to June 30th, that the registration date for that election is June 19th, 2020. And the annual town election will take place on June 30th from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. But there is also early voting ballots that have been also posted and people can request for mail-in. The next item has to do with just alerting the board that through all of this, we recently were notified that on May 14th and 15th, the Oxford Police Department went through its annual evidence audit and actually was given a really good bill of health. There's a whole process in which they check evidence that has been seized and properly stored in the status of such evidence and whether the Police Department should return it or release it. And also they look at required holding times of property that might have been seized during any kind of work that the Police Department does and whether it should be returned or destroyed. And we got very good for both our inside evidence room and outside storage locations. We got some good stellar reviews. So again, kudos to our Police Department for doing that through all of this. So the next item is to let you know another capital project that's been moving right along. I hope you have all been able to see the first installation of the park benches at Jocelyn Park that are ringing the bandstand along with the large flower pots. We had been awarded a grant, Janet Malls, a grant last year. Once again, they gave us a little bit of an extension to be able to get some of the final spring construction in. And our DPW has been able to place at least eight new iron benches that are ringing the bandstand. And then we have another 10 that are going on along the roadside and along the sidewalk that are going to be put very shortly. Actually, I was out looking at where they're putting them along with a bike rack, new trash receptacles that'll all be ironwork and also an interpretive sign. And so that's moving right along. And we're very grateful for the hard work of our DPW in doing the match that we had for that grant. The next is to tell you that we had the recent announcement of Stacy Barr, who's been our director of our community programs, both at the senior center and also our community center. She had given her notice of retirement in her last day for employment here was May 20th. We gave her the best virtual remote send-off we could with the expectation that once all was hopefully passes, we'll be able to do the real type of traditional send-off that we do. We hope she'll enjoy her retirement and we wish her well and thank her for 13 and a half years of service here in the town of Oxford. The next thing is to let you know that Ernest White Jr. has notified the Oxford Housing Authority that he was resigning as a member of the Housing Authority effective immediately. Obviously, that's an area that always requires someone who will be a strong advocate and Ernest has been for quite some time. We wanted to inform you because the chairman of the Oxford Housing Authority has offered another potential person, Wayne McFarland, as a candidate to fill the open seat vacated by Mr. White. So I just wanted to inform you of that as well. And then I think the last thing I wanted to close on a positive note because I had left here quite late on Friday and then Saturday. And I had gotten a message from our facilities technician who asked if I was still at work. And I said, I just left. I said, I just got home and it was quarter to 10:00. And he said, well, the DPW has been out in full force and they were out trying to make sure this town had honored the Secretary of Veterans Affairs for the Commonwealth, who had put out a request that as a special way to host Memorial Day events, because so many had been canceled, that they wanted to see if towns would be willing to try to light up some kind of area with gold to actually acknowledge the Gold Star families. And they, true to form, had been in touch with our new, I call him new, he's not that new anymore, our veterans agent and the Esposito Brothers and Steve Pagni. They didn't just light up our town hall and the beacon area up top with gold and uplighting for gold. And the town hall looked really beautiful, but also the bandstand, they had put gold ribbon all around it and also put a gold star. It looked really phenomenal. And I came back that night to see it and it really was inspiring. And they were all standing out, you know, we had our masks on, we were looking and it just looked great despite everything. So I just want to say that they're really a truly unique group of gentlemen that care deeply about the town of Oxford and they made it happen and we're grateful for that. And the town of Oxford certainly shone bright to those veterans. And when we put it on Facebook, it went off like wildfire and people really appreciated that. So I'm leaving on that note for my town manager update. Thank you.
No, thank you very much, Jen. And you're right. We're very blessed to have people like them working in this town. They are great people. So we'll go to Selectman's Request and we start with Cheryl.
Everyone, good evening.
Evening.
Jen, I have a question in regards to just the tax clicks, tax collections. I mean, you are rightfully so keeping a good eye on the budget and what the state's going to do and so on and so forth. How are we, how are we seeing the tax collections for the spring doing? Any idea on that?
In terms of real estate taxes, the last update I had gotten, we were at about 85%. And that was, I want to say about a week and a half ago when I was talking with the Collector Treasurer. And so that was, that was a good, you know, piece of it. The bigger piece is on meals tax and some of the other areas that we would be looking at for excise. We were already getting requests to sort of forego some of the excise fines. And so, but I, but I expect that we, by June 1st, which is right around the corner, will have a much more definitive idea about whether we're behind and whether the extra month is going to be weighing in, whether people take advantage of that. So I hope that by the next meeting, we can have an update. I think that would be fitting since the board did take a position to, you know, allow people up to June 1st to not only pay, but then pay without penalty all the way to June 29th. So I'd be more than happy to supply that information at the next meeting.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. And Mr. Chairman, I was surprised to hear Stacy's retirement. And I was just wondering if it's possible, I mean, we've always spoken so highly of all of our department heads. I'm wondering if it would be possible to maybe invite her to a board meeting and, you know, we can express our thanks to her. I'm assuming we'll be staying on Zoom for a while. I don't know. What are your thoughts? What are your thoughts?
I'm 100% with you. You're just, you're expressing your view before me, that's all.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
No, that's, that's fine. No, we will get that done. I think we'll ask her to join us possibly at the next meeting, and, you know, we can express our wishes, because you're right. She's a woman that's done an awful lot for us in this town, and I think we'd be very remiss if we didn't invite her in and thank her.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Thank you. And my, my last item is, it's, I'm going to, I'm going to tiptoe around this one a little bit. We certainly had a lot of excitement in town last week, right? So we did have a little bit of a stir. I wanted to just touch base on, very quickly, if I could, there was an article in The Telegram in regards to perhaps, perhaps, some of our employees taking advantage of that facility being open. And I just, I, I just want to ask if we've addressed this. I'm assuming we have, but I just wanted to kind of tiptoe around that a little bit and ask that question.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would defer that this not be an item we actually take up, since this has become actually a legal matter now. So as far as that, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about any kind of individual concerns. I think there are a number of things that get put in the paper, and they get, you know, labeled in a certain way, and you only get one perspective. And so I'd be more than happy to share as a follow-up with the board, but knowing that, you know, one, it's not a full posted item. What I discussed earlier was public knowledge, and now I think we're getting into some details that I think would be important to discuss only as a confidential matter with the board, because it has to do with the legal positioning of the board in the town.
That's good. I agree, it's something probably Cheryl could get an answer to that easily, just by talking to the manager privately. Am I correct?
I could do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. And that was it, thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Leads us to Megan.
Good evening, I just have a couple of quick things. I happened to notice the bandstand lit up in gold, and I had reached out to Jen to tell her I thought it was a nice touch of class by Oxford. I thought it was very nice that we could do that for our Gold Star families, especially since we couldn't celebrate Memorial Day and the sacrifices that have been made in the traditional way. So it was nice that we were able to do something. I hope that everyone had a healthy and safe Memorial Day while still remembering the reason that we have the day, the sacrifices that people have made for us, so that we can have the freedoms that we have. And on the heels of that, I just wanted to say that as we continue to navigate through this pandemic with the phased openings, I just wanted to ask everyone in the community to just be kind. Yes, we are all in the same storm, but we're not all necessarily in the same boat. You don't know everybody's story, you don't know what everybody is dealing with, but a little bit of kindness can go a long way. So before you cast dispersions and judgment, just try to be nice to your neighbor. You might be okay, but they might not. And whether or not you agree with if this is real or not, wearing a mask can save your neighbor, even if you're fine. So I just ask that you try to bear in mind what other people might be going through as well, because as a community, we are in this together, and that's all.
Thank you.
Good point, Megan, thank you. All right, Mike, you're up.
Good evening. I'll be very quick. Just want to pretty much echo what Megan said, which was, thank you to everybody who scrambled and put together the Gold Star recognition. That was a great touch to how things played out this year for Memorial Day. Thank you to those who were able to get out and decorate the graves, putting the flags up. I believe some of the ROTC members were able to help. So thank you to them also. And again, you know, just, again, like Megan said, just being kind to everybody. People have jobs to do. Whether you agree with decisions that are being made or not, people still have to do their jobs. And whether you like it or not, it is what it is. So with that being said, that's it.
Thank you again, Mike. Okay, John?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of items. First of all, I want to echo the accolades that were briefly given in regards to Stacy Barr. Stacy has been here for a long time, not only as our community, Community Director, but also started out with the seniors over at the Senior Center, and she was very, very active and helpful to our seniors over the years. So I concur, I think that we should have her in, and she deserves whatever accolades that we can give her, because she has been an outstanding public employee for us, town of Oxford. The other thing I wanted to mention was, had the opportunity, along with the Oxford Memorial Honor Guard, the two commanders of both the American Legion and the VFW, the Chief of Police, Lieutenant Marcelonis, and Detective LeBretton, participated, and myself, participated in honoring our veterans on Memorial Day. We left the American Legion at 11:00 a.m. on Memorial Day morning, and we visited all four cemeteries, placed a wreath on all the cemeteries and the monuments, the World War II, Civil War, Vietnam, Korea, and we gave them their full honors. There was a rifle salute, there was a placing of the wreath, and there was the solemn taps that were played. The weather wasn't on our side that early in the morning, but I just want to thank those veterans that came out to make sure that Memorial Day did not go by without a proper recognition for those who have given their lives, so that we could share the freedoms that we currently share in this country. So a shout-out to them, and a thank you again to Chief SAD, Officer LeBretton, and Lieutenant Marcelonis. They donated their time, they weren't on the town payroll, they ensured that we had a safe escort from each of the cemeteries, each of the monuments. As you know, at parade time, it's even more difficult, because you get traffic coming. We were part of the traffic caravan, so it was a little bit of a huge caravan, because people didn't want to all crowd in together, so we took our own vehicles. And so, knock on wood, the police department was there to help us out, because without them being there, there would have been some traffic issues. So I wanted to make sure that they get the shout-outs that they deserve. Also, I wanted to thank the DPW. The cemeteries were just outstanding. Believe me, they were cut, trimmed, there wasn't anything out of place. The monuments, they had, the flowers were all perfectly placed, the flags, everything was perfect. So it was a Memorial Day that I can say we were proud to have participated in. It's too bad that we couldn't have the, the public display that we normally have, but under the circumstances, there was no way that the veterans of this community, and many communities throughout the Commonwealth and throughout this nation, will let it go without some kind of recognition. So I thank all the veterans that participated in that endeavor. I believe that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much, John. The only thing I wanted to do outside of coming about Stacy, which I'm glad we're going to have her in, is the fact that not only Jocelyn looked nice lit up, but the benches that they have put around there look awesome. I think they really add just to the awe of the entire pack. It's so nice to see places where you can just sit, you don't have to be at a picnic table. So again, like you mentioned, John, police are unbelievable, our DPW, you know, our fire, we're lucky, very fortunate. So I just wanted to say that, I think they look great. And that's all I have to say tonight. So with that, I then entertain a motion to adjourn. Cheryl said she made that motion, even though you can't hear her, I will say that.
Someone muted me, okay. I make that motion.
Second that motion.
We have a motion in a second, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, five in affirmative, we are adjourned. You all have a wonderful week and be safe.